Good evening. I'd like to call the board of Alderman and April 9th, 2020. First, I'd like to let everyone know that we are socially distancing as best we can, and we have no, this is being streamed, so no citizens here. For the occasion, I'd like to call Madam President, love it.
Let's pray. Gracious Lord, we ask your continued blessings on our city and all of our citizens. Give us strength and courage to do what needs to be done to help one another in the current health crisis. We ask you to give you guidance for gathering this meeting to make right decisions for the good of this community. Lord, we beseech you, let your face shine upon us. Lift up your countenance upon us and be gracious unto us. Amen.
I'm going to take it lightly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under our invincible and liberty of the United States of America. Our next item is public comment. And I have two, and I'll just read them quickly and briefly. This is from Vicki Morrison. She says, could you please submit my comments at tonight's meeting? At attending the planning board meeting regarding the proposed good part development of Rockland River Drive, I feel compelled to offer my opposition to the developers' use of Rockland River for both entrance and exit. I do not know how the original plan with the exit onto 211 was finished and replaced with the current proposal. If the track ever been sued on Rockland River, and that life and hell will be a nightmare. The subdivision that will be used for an exit is not equipped for such track. It is my hope that you all, as our officials, both appointed and elected, will serve the residents of Southport in opposing this to the proposal. The next one is from Karen Spar, Timber Company. And the board of Alderman, you have this in your, or email rather. In light of the negative economic impacts of government 1972 cabin on the travel industry, the South Florida County Chamber of Commerce Board of Records asked that all work, discussion, and voting on the short-term rental ordinance cease until the public is able to attend meetings of the Alderman and planning board committees in person. Verbal communication is important to the public to know that their voices are heard with fast change position, but are hopeful that you will give the travel industry a chance to voice their concern. This issue is very important and will have a lasting impact on tourism and real estate sales to the city. So, those are the two comments. Our next item is the approval of the agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion, second. On favor?
Aye, aye.
Can you vote? Okay, thank you. End of statement, any members voting in conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest with respect to matters on the agenda, please associate that with a clap. Next item is the Arbor Day proclamation. And I will go ahead and read that. Whereas in 1972, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska water agriculture that a special day to set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wild water. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees in our city are a great source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I would say to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated this ninth day of April, 2020. Next item is the consent agenda. Just want to make you aware of the revision per Alderman party. The comments may, you see them in your, in your packet. It was changed to would be one-third the cost.
May I, can everyone please pick up their, our time here and on line? Thank you.
Because I don't.
Yeah, talk. Yeah. Bring it. Something good there, I, I, I always know it here, it's on.
That's why we leave where it was at.
All right, so anyway. So, we just need a motion to approve the March 12th, 2020, maybe eight minutes with the revision on the chip seal presentation. So move. Motion, Alderman Sharkey, second, Alderman's, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
On vote. Motion chair. Now, the second motion we need is to approve of the March 19th, 2020 special emergency meeting. Do you have a motion for the approval? And Alderman loves their second. Second, I'm here for two. Any discussion? On favor? Motion chair. Next item is the amendment to the personnel policy, section 30, state of emergency pays applies to pandemic city management's commitment.
Mr. Mayor of the Alderman, you know, last meeting, we were very quick to adopt the emergency ordinance, making sure we covered everything in our haste to do that. We, you think about how different from most emergencies that pandemic is. This is an emergency which is more of a public health emergency. And as such, our employees are still working, albeit some are home, but also at work. And the provisions regarding pay, giving double pay, is whatever emergency to shut the tail, add the tail hall down, employees are not supposed to be at work. But those who are called in especially for that get what is like ProVac because they're there for that emergency. And, and so, the intent was to make sure that that provision would be in place for their case, but it specifically addressed the pandemic. And so, we wanted it to be amended. And, and we're spit the alphabet, we had a couple of directors talking like about that. If we told them what we wanted, that perhaps it would have been a little touch right. But the bottom line is, is that during a pandemic emergency where employees are coming to work anyhow, that they would just receive regular time. That would be, and, and however, we want to clarify that, we can't, so.
Yeah, I think that we just did clarify that the amendment we got the last time applies to the hurricane type situation. And not the pandemic type situation, but that was employees are still working even though they may be going to their home. So they're still, you know, getting ready for COVID. Yes, we just want to clarify that.
Is there an action we need to take as a board?
You can have a, a motion to amend the personnel policy to reflect basically that the changes adopted last time apply to the hurricane type situation when employees are coming in to work when the city's closed, except for, you know.
Would not to, a pandemic.
Would not to, a pandemic.
So that would be your motion?
Yes, I don't think I can keep that, I think it's over. Yes, so move.
Okay, the motion is that the amendment policy for emergency pay applies to hurricanes situation, but not to pandemic. Is, is there a second? Second, I'm just recording. Any discussion?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent.
I don't rely on this situation, but you know, all the people who are, there are a lot of folks that are working at home. And we appreciate them, you know, we want to take care of those individuals who are. Is it, is it inappropriate to have established some kind of a reward system for those that are coming in? And, and taking, coming into the office? Should we not include this in this package? Should that be something separately we discuss, if at all? But some kind of, some kind of incentive that those who are coming in might get a half a day of leave time per week or something of that nature? And this is something I would go with. And give us an idea, I'm not suggesting the terms. But there are some people who are really showing up every day, not trying to do anything against those who are not, are working at home, but those who are coming in are helping us out, for instance. So, so should we not include anything in any of that language and put your discussion in? Would it be?
I think that would be, yeah, I think that would be a separate thing to do.
Okay.
He just wants to clarify now, as far as the amendment that was made last time. Doesn't apply to pandemic, because I think that was two and a half times later.
Two and a half?
Great.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I didn't want to mention that, didn't know if this was the time to do it or not.
Let me look at that, that's an interesting, you know, thing, I thought, because you never know about plenty of any consequences of doing that. I wouldn't want someone to think that they're big guys because they care for their health. And also, we won't be heard if someone may anger themselves, so they get some, like.
That's, that's why we pay the big boys. And, and, but I think that the note should be taken that if you're conservatives, it's hard to tell that there are people who, I know one specifically with a personal apartment who should be at home. And who is not. And he's out there on vacation, and he's probably a greater exposure of the casino. And we can compensate in the future of this city. And, and there may be a way to probably reward people just for their personal merit. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. No worry, I appreciate your support. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Very, very good points, Alderman Spencer, we certainly will, you know, take that under advisement. We appreciate all the work, city employees, and it should be reported for that. So, we have a motion, a second. On favor?
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion chair, you go ahead, thank you. Next will be the COVID-19 fiscal impact report.
I don't know if, you know, if Melanie is here, John, if she is prepared to report on that, and I apologize if I'm a bit fat.
I see she's in the back.
Is she not?
I mean, on the floor.
Of course, we can see her. Okay, but she's.
I see she's on the floor.
I think there's more work on that, and, and so, we're trying to keep the team together. And it's hard to do that with everybody that's a part of the team. But, it is in here?
Yeah, it's in here.
Right, right, well, then the report speaks for itself, then she wants to, uh.
Well, she's not here.
Not there, okay. Let me just recommend that, first of all, John had asked that we, had asked that we do that work. And Melanie got right on it, and her staff did different pieces of it. And, and as a result, that report is there for you, and it, it tells part of the story. The other part of the story is that the lead municipalities has already analyzed what state shared revenues, they get their benefit, and they say that the state shared revenues will be taking a hit maybe in excess of 50%. So, 50% of what we got last year for sales tax, for beer and wine tax, for intangibles, and other shared revenues, that's pretty substantial. And they even recommend that there will be property taxes that will be delinquent because people may not have jobs. And, and that, that also is a serious situation. The bottom line for all of it, which is probably why you brought it up, is anticipating the budget. What, how is this going to affect our budget? And I will tell you that right now, we're looking at this coming budget year at pretty much a continuation budget, and it may have to be supplemented to fund balance in order to maintain a status quo. Thankfully, we have a, a fund balance. However, as all of you know, that primarily is there to protect us during COVID. And so, we have to be careful about how much of that that we, we will do. And we need to also, during, during the, the May budget season, we're going to have to take a hard look at everything that we do, just like everybody else is doing right now. We're, we're no different from the rest of the people that we serve. And so, they're all finding ways to eat beans instead of, you know, spare us. And we may have to look and see if there's ways that we can, can cut back while still providing the expected level of services. Just a heads up on all of that. So, did you have any particular questions about?
Yeah, and Melanie's actually, although I can really go into, I was pointing out, it appears to me we're looking at information in the package, probably at about $250,000 hole for this current fiscal year, and $400,000 plus hole for next fiscal year.
Right, that was 400, around 400 to 500 for next year. And you're right, half of the year has been lost to this, right? Yep.
It's, it's obviously been a very challenging budget.
I should know what penny of the tax rate is, but I don't, y'all might be.
Half, and then thirty, thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand?
I think, yeah.
That's 10 cents, that's, that's a 15 cents.
Yeah, but the rates, the rates point two nine five, so.
Yep. The, the, the property tax rate, what does a penny equal to on the Alderman? I always equate things to that because when you talk about a loss of X amount or a gain of X amount, what does that mean to a person paying their property taxes? So, not that we would have raised taxes by 15 cents, but that's the magnitude of what we're looking at, so.
Do you remember our balance, if I have a chance?
I, I do not, I'm sorry.
So, and did I, did I understand you said Melanie has another report? Were you telling the board?
Did you say, I haven't, I haven't seen that in here.
We've, we've got three, three sheets.
Yeah, I see there are three sheets in here. My recommendation would be to call, just call and ask her specifically. Or if you want me to have her prepare in more detail, I can.
Yeah, I would like for it to, maybe a little summation of, of the information that's in here. Also, I don't seem to hear about ABC contribution, which I think is current of the year was budgeted at 228,000.
The ABC?
Yeah. So I'd like to have what the projection, you know, what's up with my figure and what we projected next year. That should be better.
So, so, so.
Well, the rest, I suppose.
So, I was going to say, just to committee, finally, but I did attend the ABC board meeting on Wednesday, and they estimated that they were $100,000 above budget. Now, I think that might have been because they were afraid we might shut it down. But, we are above budget on that. And then I have some other comments on the ABC board. But, we're doing well. For this, for this, that's all.
Yeah, if Melanie can kind of give us a little summation of.
Okay. A little bit greater detail, okay.
And I'll say, tell, tell us what the fund balance is projected for your condition.
Yes, all right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, project status, water stabilization, is he there? Water front stabilization.
Water front stabilization, as you know, we've received an allocation to improve the waterfront. And that went through a lot of different design and everything else. I, I was able to track down where it is at now, with all the approvals and everything else. And, and it's with Phil Doris, who is the engineer director for that. And, and he's, he will be able to give us what we need to take it to the final step for approval. I have not talked to him personally about that yet, but I intend to. But he is aware of that, and as I trace everything through, that's where we're at. I actually, and then I'll call Bruce if I have, where we're at on that.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, city doc, city attorney?
Yes, sir. The city has received an extension for the dock project FEMA funding. And the staff is working to move forward now. We're working with KAMA to get them the information they need to complete the major permitting process. We have to come up and propose a riparian line. And that's what we're working on now to get that drafted and submit a proposal to them as to where we propose the riparian line to be. So, we're working on that, we've been in touch, I've had several, several phone calls, or one long phone call this week with the DCM attorney, and we're working on that.
Okay, thank you. Next is the weather tower, and I'll be brief. We have received contributions for that for over, over $4,000. I have been in contact, I assess the city manager with the engineer. The drawing's been submitted to the, to the state for their approval. And he's incorporating the original weather vane and the bullet and parts of the tower into the structure. So, we're just waiting on that, and then this would go to the parts of that committee. So that's where we are with the weather tower.
And let me clarify too, just so it's understood. What we have is the preliminary sketch plan that's been submitted to the state because they understand it will be adjusted possibly, but they need to see the concept. They approve the concept, and then we bring it back, and then the recreation committee reviews it, and they send a recommendation us, and then the board does the final approval.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Our next item is the wastewater treatment plant, Mr. Beck.
Okay, the, it seems like all we're doing is giving status reports, but John Nichols with the Frederick County, after we had a conference call, we came to the conclusion that he needed to prepare for us a proposal, and, and that it through his folks, and then they would present the proposal to us, and we would decide where to go from there. So, we're just waiting for him to bring the proposal. I, I think a lot of routine stuff is slowing up right now because of, of the immediate issues that are going on. But, but that's where that's at, we're waiting, we're waiting for that. And, and should we go too long, I will call and prompt them.
All right, thank you, thank you for your work on that. Next item is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget status, Mr. Beck.
And we've, we've advanced around that a little bit. We are on a schedule. The department heads will have their stuff finished by the middle of this month. And then I'll work with Melanie, and we will start having meetings with them to, to get that hammered out. And then starting in May, you folks will be looking at the budget and, and deciding when to have workshops to do that. And our desire is to have the camera ready by the first of June so that we can set our hearing for our regular meeting, where it will be approved and will be good to go for the next fiscal year. Understanding it'll be, it'll be lean this year.
It sounds like it will be a lean budget, thank you. Next item, our agenda is the city manager position.
We've got, we've got 19 candidates. They're from a lot of different places. There's at least five that I think have extra qualifications. Majority of them have qualifications and that they've been a city manager somewhere. And we got two that are probably both ends of the spectrum. We got one that looks like he's just right out of school, and another one that was the former city manager of San Bernardino in California, and he's in his 80s. And so, it's, you know, we were trapped in a, a very diverse crowd. And my intent there is this is such a few amount, but they're, they are quality. I want to make a copy of all of those and get those to you. The schedule, I'd like to see us follow that, is that, that we, we look at them and pick the ones, maybe five out of those that we like. And then we will send a written questionnaire to them for them to fill out. And that way, we get to see their writing skills as well as hear their thought-out comments. And then from those written comments, we will pick three to interview. And we'll set up interviews in May. And, and so that by the middle of May, we will have picked someone, and it gives them ample time to be able to tell their board. It also gets them through a difficult budget season and a difficult time with their town. We, I don't think we want someone who's going to jump ship in the middle of the storm. There are at least, at least three candidates that appear to be between jobs right now. And it's not unusual for a city manager to be between jobs. They say that there's two kinds of managers, one that's been fired and one that's about to be. So, you're right. And so, that is, you know, it's, it's not unusual for them to be, it's like a baseball pitcher. We will do background checks and find out why somebody might have been like a good. But, but indeed, those two could start tomorrow. But I, I think we want to give our due diligence to this. And so, I will, I will put together the package and let you folks start looking through them. And I'm going to let you look through them first before I tell you, I think, five of them, because I want, I want you to look at them and see what you think, so.
Well, I appreciate your, your help with that, and I know you'll help us find the permanent candidate.
And, and every, every one of you have been very kind and have extended to me that you would wish I would stay. And I, I want to make sure that you know it's not because I don't like Southport. There's two very strong underlying factors. Number one is that the state retirement law requires that I work no more than $1,000 or else I forfeit my retirement and have to start over. And I don't want to do that. And they're not likely to make a change just for me when there's thousands of retirees. Secondly, is my wife has endured me being gone for Coast Guard or for city management for over 40 years. And at some point, she was hoping I would retire and that she could be first. And so, I've, I've told her that I would try to make that happen. So, come July, I will belong to her and the grandchildren, and the grandchildren might win, so. So, that, so I don't want you to think that I just don't want to be, I'm about to.
No, we, we appreciate you all wanting to stay. I, I can fix the first one, I can't fix the second one. You'll have to go to that.
Question. Chris, is, as the confirmation deadline, that period ended, that question period ended?
You know, I, I have to look again, but I think the way I left it was a little bit open-ended, that it would stay open until field, so the people don't quit sending. Because I would hate for a good person to say, oh gosh, I missed the deadline. Because we received actually one candidate this past week, two actually, that were very strong, stronger than some of the others we've received so far. And it was like out of the blue, that we got them. One has had, has been with a coastal town and has dealt with the last six storms in dealing with FEMA and everything else. And I thought, well, that's certainly a, a strong thing. And, and by the way, the, most of all of them have at least 10 to 15 years of experience in working with local governments and management. Some have been business owners for over 20 years, so it's a, we don't have many just right out of school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next up is discussion Battery Island bird nesting, Audubon Society, Ms. Sharkey.
Thank you. This is the kind of information that normally would get covered at Nature Fest, but because Nature Fest can't be held this year, I wanted to bring it to the board so that we can all be on the lookout to look out for the birds and everything that we dearly love. The two uninhabited islands that are between us and Bald Head, Striking Island and Battery Island, are bird sanctuaries. They are designated bird sanctuaries, they are not for human recreation, they never have them. are not for human recreation. They never have them. But it has been in the past, and I anticipate here in the future this spring, that we will see boaters, kayakers approach those islands, land on the islands and walk around. Lindsay Addison, who is the North Carolina Audubon biologist for this area and manages those islands, has asked me to communicate to the public that if we see people on the island over there, it is, um, it's requested that we contact North Carolina Wildlife Resources Law Enforcement at, uh, eight hundred six six two seven one three seven. And she will confirm with anybody who has a question about the legality of somebody being on those islands, that it is not for humans. It is only to look at, but not to walk on them. So, the other thing I'd like to pass on is that sometimes we might forget that number. We can always call our own animal welfare, welfare officer, Kate Marshall, and she can be reached at City Hall, four five seven seven nine hundred, or her direct line at four seven seven fourteen eighty-six. She is extremely educated about wildlife. She would know the right people to contact if there's an injured animal, and she's here to help animals, so let's use her to that purpose. Uh, the last thing I have, I'm gonna pass on to, um, our information specialist and everything about a virtual field trip that Audubon will have online to try to share wildlife with people, but keeping them from getting on the islands and stuff like that. So, that was all. Thank you.
No, thank you. That's, that's marvelous information, and, uh, virtual tours, that's good, too. Um, item five, um, appointment with ABC Board. Uh, note Alderman Spencer has advised the clerk that interviews with applicants are still pending, and he's not prepared to make the recommendation at this time. Um, and so we'll, uh, put that on the agenda next. Is that correct?
Interview will be scheduled next Wednesday between twelve and two.
Okay, perfect.
All right, and they'll be over the phone. We didn't really know how it was gonna format the interview, so we, after we met Wednesday, we came up with a solution of, uh, over the phone.
That's perfect, yes, thank you.
Sorry for the delay, and I, I take full responsibility.
There, there's no rush on something like that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
No, 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 thank you. Uh, now, um, City Manager, I know you have a few, uh.
Yeah, well, I had recommended that, you know, we, we had to have a meeting, and that's important, but, uh, the brevity of the meeting is important, because the longer we're all sitting in a room, the more opportunity there is for, uh, stuff to be shared. None of us know, if we might be one of those people like Ty Ford and Mary that carries it and doesn't have it. Uh, I'd recommend that unless there was something, uh, really, uh, really pending, that we, uh, that we dispense with that. I did want one thing to be clarified, though, it was important, and that is that the planning board is still meeting, and I, I think, uh, Karen had, uh, or excuse me, Mayor Protil.
Right, um, during these, I just was gonna update about the planning board. During these extraordinary times, the planning board is continuing to do the work of the city. The planning board is steadily making progress on the UDO update project with virtual meetings. This phase will be drawing to a close soon, and the next phase, which will be public review and engagement, will begin after that. Uh, the regularly scheduled monthly planning board meeting is on, is on April sixteenth at six P M. Uh, since we find ourselves in this unusual circumstance, please refer to the city website, W W dot Southport N C dot org for updates about the planning board meeting schedule and meeting protocol. And then I'd also like to thank Thomas Lloyd, our, uh, city planner and, and acting as staff liaison. He's continuing to support the ongoing work of the planning board.
Uh, thank you, Mr. February. Um, in light of City Manager's recommendation, um, if everybody stays safe, and if I could have the, uh, motion to adjourn.
Um, so we're not gonna have any kind of comments?
That, that was the recommendation.
If, if there's some, uh, you know, like I said, if there's something that's pressing, we can do. Now, and we did not need committee reports. No committee reports to that?
Well, it's the planning board.
Oh, just, just got it, yeah.
All right, um, you made a motion.
No, I haven't, no one's made a motion, that was, uh, I mean entertaining a motion.
Okay.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
No, all right.
I have a second, but I, you got something, you got something pressing.
Yeah, we do, we, we do have committee reports. Um, with ABC, uh, we, we did have the hundred thousand dollars above budget. Uh, there is also, they're in the process of buying back from the retail stores or the mixed beverages, uh, any bottles that are unused. I think they were buying heavily on the, uh, Saint Pa- on the idea that Saint Patrick's Day. Uh, so there is, like, we did approve during that committee that they would be buying back, uh, those bottles. So, I did wanna address that. Um, and then with the Fourth of July Committee, uh, as being the liaison and taking part in that meeting on Monday, um, I wanna congratulate the mayor on making a tough decision. A very tough decision, probably the right decision. Um, and what the people don't understand is the Fourth of July Committee is a very large organization with a lot of financial commitments. Uh, by making that call, you saved a bunch of money for the sponsors, uh, in deposits and things of that nature. So, a lot of, a lot of people worked on that. But I wanna congratulate you for making a tough decision, um, so, uh, in, on, on that. Um, then we also have, uh, so this probably would go into, um, our, our personal comments, but we've had a request on, on clarifying the community building, and, and does your order to, to stop any summer activities include not taking reservations on the community building? And I was asked to give clarification or specifics on that, okay?
Yes, City Manager, now we're gonna, we're gonna discuss that and, um, make, make our decision. My, my assumption is that it would include, we closed, you know, all facilities in that regard, so I think it would include this building, because large weddings and that type of thing.
And refunds, really wanted to have it done in advance. But I think your, your, uh, your order said through, uh, Labor Day.
Correct.
So, that would be every single facility through Labor Day.
So, no, so no reservations?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
The intent would be not to encourage gatherings.
Sure, okay. Um, these are, these are trying times, and, and for us not to make our own comments, for board comments, um, as well. So, am I the only one?
No, anyone else that wants to make comments, please go here. We didn't say you couldn't if you'd like to, go here, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and so that's why I, I just would like to go with the normal process. All right, thank you.
I also have comments from the certification. The lifeboat that we talked about in the last meeting has been moved, uh, thanks to the city, and brought to Stevens, uh, Stevens Park to be cleaned and painted. Uh, I, I gotta give a thank you to Ray Jenkins, who is a Southport resident and the owner of R and R Powder Coating, and he went there and he sandblasted the boat yesterday, did a beautiful job, and, uh, our first coat, or two coats of white we put on the boat today. Uh, just two of us apart, and we were fine. Um, I, I big thanks to the city for moving the boat around and turning it as we need it, and, uh, we hope to, um, finish it up in the next month or so.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
I have a committee report.
Absolutely.
If we're gonna do this, I might as well do it.
Absolutely.
Um, Forestry Committee. Uh, obviously, we're not having Arbor Day, but it's good to know that for the sixteenth year, Southport has received designation as a Tree City USA community, and of course, it's something to be proud of. And the recognition is given by the National Association of State Foresters and the Arbor Day Foundation. It's not merely a matter of having a lot of trees. The honor goes to cities that officially meet the standards for taking care of the trees and preserving the whole canopy. Um, there's still a lot going on, even though we don't have Arbor Day coming up, uh, at least not the observation. Um, a number of people have asked me when we're going to and what we're going to do about replacing the tree in front of city, the old city hall. Uh, a good-sized live oak has been selected, and it will replay, go in the place of the, uh, old historic one that we lost. Um, but the planting is on hold for right now, but the tree is alive and well and growing, and it'll be good when we're ready to plant it. Um, an update, the sixteen trees we planted in the first week of February of this year, uh, are alive and well and leaving, and the ten that we planted last year are really full of leaves, so all of them are doing well. And finally, we have four applications for three open positions on the committee, but the committee elected to hold off doing any meetings or interviews until we could actually sit down and interview the folks. And, um, finally, um, since we're all sitting around at home, we hope, uh, not going out much, and once you're tired of Netflix, um, you might want to check out some very interesting and helpful webinars that are available. Um, most of them are free, and the ones that are not are just a, a few dollars, and with these, you can learn all about trees. So, we decided that we would put these links up on the, um, uh, Forestry Committee section of the city website. You can find that by going to the website and clicking on the Board of Alderman, and then when you go down past our smiling faces, then you'll see the committees, and you can click on Forestry Committee. They really are very interesting webinars. That's it for me.
Oh, thank you, excellent report. Anyone else? Ms. Sharpe?
Um, I don't have a committee report. Electric Cities has been meeting electronically, and they'll be, you know, having some recommendations as far as rates and things like that, I think, soon, but nothing right now. Um, I just, if, if it's appropriate, just some final comments.
Absolutely.
Um, I think it's just based on hearing, um, everybody and, um, uncertainty that we're facing. Uh, I think we need to try to improve our communication. Um, we need to try to maybe start working on what the plan for the future is and try to communicate it to the community. I've had some business owners express concern, uh, obviously economically, but the other concern they have is about our social welfare. Uh, people that are out of work, people that they normally employ are now at home. Um, they're stressed. They may be, um, falling into bad habits that could linger beyond, um, these lockdowns. And, uh, what can we do as a community to think about this holistically? And I think we have to talk about it electronically or somehow, you know, start thinking about what is gonna be the plan, uh, based on data and recommendations from the state to, you know, how do we open things up? What can be opened? Um, one of the questions was, is just because the city isn't gonna hold an event, does that mean my business can't hold an event in July or August? I don't have that answer for that person. So, I, I would like us to try to work on that kind of thing so we can communicate. When there's not communication, people just get more nervous than anything, and if we can start working on those issues for them, I think we'd be helping everybody. Thanks.
Uh, very good comments, thank you. And I think in terms of communication, if you could, well, you can't see my emails or my texts or my phone calls, but we have a very robust communication system going right now. In terms of communicating with the public, thanks to the, uh, the information officers, uh, Randy and Lisa, we, we, we put out, uh, question and answers today. We did a video on Monday that was released on Tuesday, trying to get as much information out as possible. And, um, I agree that our businesses, you know, it is extremely tough right now. We are addressing that. Um, there are volunteer groups, um, nonprofits that are working right now to alleviate this, uh, as much as they can, and so we, we are working with that. The city government is not unaware. We, we are working on it, and, um, I would certainly, if the Alderman would like, uh, updates and that type thing, or, or, you know, what we're, what we're doing, we certainly, you know, can do that. But if you see what's been, uh, what we've done so far in terms of videos and press releases and statements and that type thing, there's a lot of information that's going out there, and we will, uh, continue to do so. Any, anyone else? Oliver Spencer?
I appreciate, uh, Oliver Sharpe, you leading with that, because she is way more eloquent than I am. Uh, I'm not receiving these updates somehow with the email, um, with different things that are happening, finding out about them all videos on Facebook. So, communication is important. I stand beside you as a fellow leader, understanding that this is a lonely position, and the decisions that you make are, are thought over, and you have nothing but the best interest of the community, but I would like to be a part of that knowledge, and, and I haven't seen some of that. Um, but I do stand beside you because these are trying times. I want the people to know that, uh, this is not fun for us. Uh, my, this is not a campaign commercial, by the way, but my first year as an Alderman on the Fourth of July Committee, I had to cancel the fireworks because a lightning storm was coming up. My second year, I had to cancel the Fourth of July General on the, on the, uh, Chair, the Fourth of July Committee. This is not fun. As a native of Southport, it's the last thing I would have ever dreamed of having to do, but I love the people of Southport, and we are doing the very best we can. So, uh, we need to be generous in spirit, support our leaders. This is a trying time. We are in uncharted waters. So, uh, I, I, I believe that we are the greatest nation in the world, but it's now our, our turn to prove it. So, please support, uh, the leaders, uh, local, county, state, and federal, uh, and, and, and give some patience. Uh, we might have to give up a few luxuries, uh, but we will get through this. And I do appreciate the opportunity to comment at the end of this meeting. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else?
City Manager, can, can you bring us back in?
Um, I will, and thank you.
I'll have a second motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Oliver, now, uh, we have a, a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.